I'm off, peace out.
Call to order the regular meeting in Gladstone City Commission on Monday, April 14th, 2014, 7:00 PM. The first item on our agenda is invocation. Commissioner Gay will lead the invocation. Please rise.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you this evening for this opportunity to come together as a community and chart our way forward as we make decisions in the best interest of our fellow citizens. We ask that you would give us wisdom as we move forward as a city, as a community together. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance.
To the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Here.
Commissioner Gay?
Here.
Commissioner Nemeczek?
Is excused.
And Commissioner Matanin?
Is excused.
And Mayor Mackey?
Here. Next item on our agenda is public comment. If anybody has any public comment, would you stand up and identify yourselves and take the podium, please? Moving on, next item on our agenda is consent agenda. Wow, there's a lot of stuff on there today. The City Commission's regular meeting minutes of March 25th, 2014. Parks and Recreation Board's regular meeting minutes of March 4th, 2014. The Border Review Organizational Meeting Minutes of March 3rd, 2014. The Board of Review Meeting Minutes of March 11th, 2014. The Board of Review Meeting Minutes of March 13th, 2014. The Board of Review Meeting Minutes of March 14th, 2014. The Board of Review Meeting Minutes of March 25th, 2014. The EDC Regular Meeting Minutes of April 8th, 2014. And Payment of Bills.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I support.
Supported by Commissioner Gay, supported by Commissioner Bostwick to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion is carried. Move on to public hearings, which there are none, and unfinished business, which there is none. So our next item is new business, and the first item is the Michigan Patriot Guard Annual Charity Ride. And I believe we have people in the audience who'd like to address the commission tonight, correct?
My name is Jerry Nelson, and I'm the RIC Coordinator for the Michigan Patriot Guard Annual Charity Ride this year. We are bringing the biker ride back to Gladstone again this year. The ride will be taking place on May 17th, and we're going to be starting the ride at the American Legion in Gladstone. And tonight, we're asking permission to close the side street, A Street, between the Legion and the Veteran Park because we use both. We do the pancake breakfast at the Legion in the morning, and then we also do a biker ride send-off at the park that morning. And then at 10:30 sharp, all the bikers leave for the day, and then they come back to Gladstone around 4 o'clock for dinner. And we'll be using both the park and the Legion that evening. So it's easier for us, especially with parking bikes, with the traffic going in and out of that street. We want to make sure the bikers are safe.
Staff recommends that we authorize this, so is there any questions from the commission?
This has been passed by Director Guyer, I'm assuming.
I make a motion that we adopt this. Closure on May 17th, North A Street between Superior and Delta from 7:30 to 10:00 AM and 2:00 to 9:00 PM.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Bostwick, supported by Commissioner Gay to approve the Michigan Patriot Guard Annual Charity Ride. All those in favor, that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion is carried. Good luck.
Thank you.
Just know if you need anything. Next item is New Horizons Ministries 5K Run Walk. Guess we have anybody in the audience standing up?
Again, June 28th, 2014, 7:00 AM to noon. This is an early one. 5K Run Walk, the route is outlined in your staff report here. No problems with staff.
Questions?
Move to authorize New Horizons Ministries 5K Run Walk, permission to hold the race on June 28th, 2014.
I support it.
By Commissioner Gay, supported by Commissioner Bostwick to approve the New Horizons Ministries 5K Run Walk. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is carried. Next item is Arbor Day Proclamation, which I assume you want me to read. Good luck. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agricultural that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Joseph Mackey, Mayor of the City of Gladstone, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2014, as Arbor Day in the City of Gladstone, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations dated this 25th day of April 2014 by myself. I will sign that very gladly. The next item on our agenda is MERS Healthcare Saving Participation Agreement. City manager?
Do we need a, do we need action on that?
Proclamation, yeah.
Oh, okay. So moved.
I support it.
See how she protects me from doing really stupid things? Been moved and supported to proclaim Arbor Day on April 26th. It says 25th on the proclamation.
Yeah, 25th, yep.
April 25th, 2013, in the City of Gladstone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion is carried. Now we're moving on to MERS Healthcare Saving Participation Agreement from the City Manager.
With some changes in healthcare recently, this agreement is needed to reimburse three of our current Teamsters retirees for post-employment health premiums due to tax purposes. So the city will deposit the premium into this account, and then they reimburse themselves as they get a bill and pay it, or co-pays, or whatever. It's specifically for healthcare. In the past, the city was billed directly, and we would pay the bill. You know, the retiree wouldn't have to do anything with the monthly payment. But with the Michigan Conference of Teamsters Welfare Fund, the health insurance that we have now, when the employee retires, the bill has to go to the retiree. So I've worked with Tom Jordan at MERS. This is a similar plan that the commission approved for the current supervisors group, which is employee-funded at this point. So this would be, you know, city depositing the money, and then the retiree would have the access to the account.
This basically goes into a health savings account.
Right.
And they can withdraw it for the purposes of their medical.
Correct. Yep. As, you know, we promised them through union bargain.
And that's come as a result of a change in the, a change from Teamsters?
Correct.
If I remember correctly.
Yep.
So we really don't have a choice. If we were to directly write them a check, that could be subject to federal tax.
Correct.
When in reality, it should not be taxed.
Right.
It should be pre-taxed.
Right. Yep.
Any other questions? I was kind of personally involved in this because three retirees were caught in a difficult situation that was not of their doing. The union was aware of a provision in the contract, and we sat down and worked it out, and I commend the City Manager for being very flexible in understanding in this matter as we work this issue with our retirees, lived up to our obligations. So can we get a motion?
I make a motion that we reimburse the Teamsters the post-employment health premiums due to tax. Approve the attached MERS Healthcare Savings Program Participation Agreement.
Support.
Move and supported to authorize the City Manager to enter into the MERS Healthcare Savings Program Participation Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion is carried. Next item is sale of two lots in the North Bluff Industrial Park as recommended by the EDC. I was at that EDC meeting, the City Manager was there.
And we have Mike Dukovich with us in the audience tonight. If you have any questions for him. Just preliminarily, I'll maybe introduce it and then turn the floor over to Mike for further questions or comments. He's proposing to purchase two lots in the North Bluff Industrial Park. The proposal is for inside storage units and an outside, area outside for storage and recreational vehicles. The proposal was brought to the EDC Board Tuesday, April 8th, and he made an offer, the EDC made a counter offer, Mike has accepted that, so we need, EDC makes a recommendation to the City Commission, the City Commission ultimately has the authority to sell the land. That's past practice for any property in the industrial park, goes to the EDC Board first before the City Commission. But at this level, we're looking for permission for the City Manager to follow through with the survey and title work and all that kind of stuff, and then the clerk and the mayor actually sign the deed and property transfer affidavit if you so choose.
With a reverter clause, right?
Correct.
EDC debated this quite a bit at the meeting before they came to a resolution, and Mr. Dukovich was pretty involved in negotiating with the EDC, from what I observed, as a guest at the EDC meeting. And I think the EDC did an awful lot of thinking about whether this project was something they wanted, they thought we should put into our industrial park. So if they recommend it, I think it's probably a pretty good idea.
I just have one question. On the storage shed, it says indoor and outdoor. Is it all year going to be indoor, outdoor, or?
It's a combination of self-storage buildings.
Okay.
Where you have individual, you know, to store items, like self-storage facility, and also like an RV.
Mike, could we get you to go up to the, Mike, the TV's not picking this up?
Sure.
Hi, I'm Mike Dukovich with Lincoln Fair Storage, and to answer your question, it's a combination of indoor self-storage units and also outdoor RV storage, boat storage, trailer storage, and stuff like that, where customers could have their own individual space, their own individual lot, where they could bring their camper in and out as they chose.
Okay, do you have any idea of how much it would cost a month to store it?
Yes.
Specifically talking about the campers?
Yeah, the campers. For a camper?
In particular, yeah.
I guess it would depend on size, but probably between $20 to $40.
Okay. So it's, yeah, it's very.
That's kind of questions the EDC was asking as well, based on the whole other matter which you attended earlier tonight. And one of the things the EDC talked about with Mr. Dukovich was your rates are set by the competition, right? There's a lot of competition out there.
Correct, yes, yep. There's competition that obviously drives demand, but we had a very good conversation, you know, with the EDC, and we talked about all sorts of different issues that they had. So I think they're very happy with the proposal.
Yeah, I mean, I looked at this, and I think it'd be good having up there, especially give people, if we pass that ordinance or not, on the RV or trailer at least, so have a place to store it.
Yep.
And it's reasonable.
Right.
I believe so.
Any other questions?
No issues with Planning Commission at all?
This hasn't been brought before the Planning Commission yet.
Okay, I'm assuming, based on the land use.
Right, no, Renee has already, you know, checked zoning, is this an allowable use in the industrial park?
That's.
Clearance there, no problem.
Okay.
So Mike will have to present the site plan before the Planning Commission for specific details, you know?
Before building permits issue.
Right, yeah.
Yep, correct.
Anytime we can, anytime we can assist the farmers in our community, we have an obligation to do so. I'd approve that we accept the offer of $20,000 for two lots in North Bluff Industrial Park, allow City Manager to work with Dukovich through the process, and allow the city clerk and mayor to sign the deed and property transfer affidavit.
I support it.
Motion's been made and supported to authorize sale of two lots in North Bluff Industrial Park. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, that motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Moving on on the agenda to City Manager's reports.
In your packet tonight, I gave you a little picture of a solar array. I just wanted to, you know, the city staff and I have been working with WPPI for over a year on this project, and just trying to bring it to your attention, look for if you have any suggestions on areas that we should look at to put some, you know, some kind of solar array similar to the one in the package here tonight. I gave you all the details of the size of it and everything. Kind of looking for a public area where, you know, people going through can see that this is a joint project between the city and WPPI. Eldredelta is another company, you know, their main headquarters is in the City of Gladstone. They currently purchase their power from WPPI and are in similar discussion, you know, same project. So if we both go through with it, there's going to be two arrays like the one in the picture here. So we've had a couple meetings last summer, actually went to some locations of where we were considering putting these, and some of it was city property, some of it wasn't. So we contacted, you know, the current owner, and for whatever reason, that, you know, site got taken off the list, whatever.
So what you're saying is you want this in a visible place?
Kind of, if possible, for people, you know, traveling through to see kind of the joint cooperation.
When I first saw this, I thought you were looking for specifically a place to generate power to run some kind of device that was already in place, and you said, no, you want it to be visible. I thought it would be running a light, you know, public lighting, or a traffic signal or something like that.
Because when you mentioned to me, I was thinking you were looking for a place to kind of put it where it would operate fine, but kind of out of sight, out of mind.
Nope.
Okay.
We did talk about the sports park, right? As a possibility, because it would be really visible there, and you have a need for power there to run.
Yes, this, it will be metered, and it will offset some account, but it doesn't have to be hooked up next to wherever that account is, you know.
I would think that's to be fairly close, so you don't have to mention.
So in the sports park, with the master plan that we just received, you know, we don't want to permanently put this somewhere, you know, then we, is that going to be a ball field or a parking lot or something? Oh, now we got to move it. So we got to figure out where it could fit in the plan that we won't be hurting other development.
It's my understanding, Joe, on how they, they meter what you're supplying back into, so I think there's, I don't think it has to be close to, you know, where the account that's.
Oh, yeah, that's, I suppose that's possible, that they might feed it back into the distribution system.
Because if they're just feeding it back in, and they meter it, they meter the output, then they can just essentially, they're just.
Not that against use of general.
And I'm sure they want this to be a demonstration project for future projects that are more alternative energy-related, as opposed to burning fossil fuel to create power, you know? That's the way the world is going, and they want a demonstration project, I'm thinking.
And the, these panels here follow, they track the sun. So as, you know, it's going to be moving, another location that we looked at was next to the park and ride.
The foot of Ninth Street?
Yes, but that's, that's all owned by MDOT.
What was the, I remember we were talking about the, about the train engine.
A light?
Wasn't there some, wasn't there some property there that everyone that was in the audience assumed that that belonged to the railroad, but actually it doesn't?
That's a public right-of-way there, and that street is Railway Avenue.
That would be a very.
You want this in front of the train?
No, no.
Oh.
I'd say behind it, if there's clearance there.
Oh, between the train and the rail yard?
You get a good look at the sun.
You get a good look at the sun.
Between the train and the rail yard, that's not, that's not.
What I'm saying is, then you could, if you're trying to put a spotlight on a project, that's an ideal spot to do it. If you can, you know, because you're right on the highway. I thought you were trying to put it in a more inconspicuous spot, but.
Well, if we can't find a public location, we, it wouldn't be this tight, but we could mount one on top of a building, but it wouldn't be this type of array.
I'm sure you've already ran this by these learned scholars over here.
Oh, this has been at staff meetings, yeah.
It's kind of funny, because I was just reading an article about a very large, they call it a solar farm, that's creating grief because of the heat attracts insects, which attracts birds, which attract predators, and it's creating its own little ecosystem, but it's damaging wildlife, but it's a very, very, you know, thousands of acres of it rather than, that's, I highly doubt that's an issue, but.
These guys didn't come up with any brilliant ideas?
Well, down behind where we took the old power plant down, but further towards Saunders Point, kind of a wide open field there, but how much public would see that, you know? We've looked at the ski hill, you know, over, what would that be?
What, did Buckman suggest maybe in front of Moivelson's house?
I don't know if it's something that you'd want there, but is there somewhere near the campground that would be ideal, keeping in mind the potential for future expansion in the campground?
Right, right.
If you could put it in the right spot, you'd have a lot of, you'd have a lot of traffic through there.
We just need to find that and make, you know, work with the property owner and. Well, I mean, you guys have proved, you know, that staff and I continue to try to find a permanent location?
Yeah, now that I know, now that I know what kind you want, because I had a whole bunch of ideas when I was thinking that it was not supposed to be more inconspicuous.
The first location we looked at last summer was down by the pram shack, but are we blocking somebody's view, you know? These two large. Once you take away that waterfront view, you won't get it back with these kind of, these large of arrays. Okay, well, we'll keep looking. Keep you posted. Thank you.
Is that it?
No.
Nope, there's more.
Sorry, I wasn't sure if it went to other. Before this meeting tonight, 5 o'clock tonight, we had a public forum here for the RV parking and storage of equipment. I thought it was a very good, very good meeting.
I agree. Mr. Bostwick, you were there?
Looking forward to just working on that a little bit more, and it'll, it'll be brought back to the commission, but it probably won't be for you to vote on April 28th. It's going to go back to subcommittee now, once we amend that, maybe we'll bring a draft April 28th, but your last meeting said you wanted to see it again by April 28th, and we're moving as fast as we can, but probably need to set another, if we change it, we need to set another public hearing, introduce it, set the public hearing, hold the public hearing before it can be voted on, so we'll, we'll continue with the process. Little bit of information from utility billing. We've had 100 customers sign up for web access, and probably a year, year and a half ago, we changed our utility billing software, and the software is very user-friendly to either a business or a resident. You can log on, create your own account, and you can view your history, your usage, anything, you know, specifically to your account. So we've had 100 customers sign up to do that, so that's very good information. I'm sure that number's, it hasn't been available that long, so I'm sure the numbers are going to climb pretty fast, too.
WPPI would like people to manage their account, right?
Oh, absolutely. Well, we get a lot of questions, well, what was my usage last month, or what was my, you know, last summer, this month, how much, you know, kilowatts did I use, or whatever? Now they can log on and view all that on their own account. So last month, we had 152 people pay through web payments, and we've had 28 people sign up for e-bill statements. So good information, and that was just available last month for the first month, so as those numbers change, I'll bring them back to you. Still on the utility accounts, if you remember, we, we don't charge residents a dollar per account for us to be able to turn people off during the winter season, which is December through April. April 16th, that, that period is now done. So a week or so ago, we did send out our past due utility notices. We were planning to do door hangers today, but that didn't get done. We will be doing them very soon here and start enforcing shut-offs. People, you know, typically during the winter, you know, I'll catch up when I get my tax return, or I'm looking for assistance, they should have had plenty of time to do that, and we'll be enforcing those shut-offs, so that's coming. Two, two businesses in town, I just wanted to announce Norfab, that's a current business in our North Bluff Industrial Park, was selected as Michigan's Top 50 Company to Watch, and will be recognized by Governor Snyder at the, as Michigan celebrates Small Business Awards. There's a ceremony in Lansing on May 6th, so I thought that was very good, very positive.
Chuck Walkner?
Yep, Chuck Walkner, mhm. And also Vanair, another business in our North Bluff Industrial Park. President Beverly Vandevossi announced the successful completion of a transaction selling the company to William Vandevossi. That's her brother-in-law. Beverly has led the company as president since the death of her husband in 2008, Richard Vandevossi, and William was named Vanair's CEO in 2010, so.
Dick was going to fly me down to a meeting in Lansing one time with his little plane. We're going to go across Lake Michigan. I says, what happens if we lose an engine or whatever? He says, we nose-dive into the lake. And I says, I'm not going.
So that's all I have.
Very good. Moving on to City Commission Committee Reports. Let's see, did I tend to anything? Yeah, I've been to a, I go to all the DDA meetings. DDA, I think, just has hired somebody. I met her today, Special Events Coordinator.
Yes, Amber Hansen, just started last Wednesday, getting her full speed ahead on Farmer's Market and Crazy Days, and many more events to come.
I told her she better get prepared to work a lot, because I'm sure you've thrown a lot of stuff at her to take care of that. We really, and I don't need to be smart and all that, we haven't had a staff person take care of that kind of stuff, and so. That's the person for the downtown businesses. The Joint Government is coming up this Wednesday. What's on the agenda?
We're going to talk about the non-motorized trail from Gladstone, P Point 5 Road.
Oh, yes, oh, yes. And the Parks and Recreation Board is thinking of, well, they're going to have to come up with a local match if we're able to access the external monies that have been identified to get the trail out to P Point 5 Road, which is where you turn off your other terrace, which would get us in line in 2017 for MDOT when they rebuild the high. which would get us in line in 2017 for MDOT, when they rebuild the highway and, and the Eskenaba River Bridge to continue that trail into the City of Eskenaba. And there's going to be a need for a local match, perhaps as much as a half million dollars, and so we've been kicking around some ideas, one of them being a millage, and I've sat down with Parks and Recreation Board and said, well, this is how much millage would need to be raised, and right now, we're just talking about the City of Gladstone and Eskenaba Township, which is where the, the walkway will be located, but it could be expanded to other areas as well. And so at some point in time, we're probably going to approach the township board and ask them for, for support in the form of trying, you know, trying to get people to consider voting for that. I think a walkable community is, is a big thing, you see a lot of people in the summertime walking in this community, so that's one of their big projects they're pushing for right now. So, those are the places, I, those are the boards and committees that I went to. Anything else?
Negotiations.
Oh, yes.
Were proceeding pretty well.
With the Teamsters?
Yep, with the Teamsters.
Yeah, we have a proposal that was put in front of them, so we're hoping to get supported at the full Teamsters meeting. Moving on to boards and commission reports, MDEQ, Evaluation of the City of Gladstone Water System, Mr. Buckman.
Every three years, by federal EPA law, our district engineer, we're, Michigan is a primacy state, so the, we have the MDEQ, which EPA makes the laws, MDEQ enforces the laws, it's similar to federal MiOSHA and Michigan MiOSHA. Anyway, every three years, we're required to have a sanitary survey by a, a civil engineer, a professional, a PE, and Scott Sweeney is our area, our district engineer, who covers Gladstone, Eskenaba, and Garden, and Neyma, and some other areas, I'm not quite sure of, but this is his report, every three years, we get one of these and it has a list of stuff that we usually list what we're doing well and what we need to get updated. Under the requirements, the first requirement is updated general plan, and it is called a sanitary survey, it's sort of confusing because we have sanitary sewers, but it's called a, that's a, it's always been called a sanitary survey, and it's, they go through and, and they run through everything from our laboratory procedures to the treatment works, to distribution system, they cover everything, and we go through it. Anyway, he came up with a list of requirements, the one is updated general plan, which are, include several things in the general plan, he, there's a, you, we get a copy of the rules and it lists all the stuff that has to be done, but one of the things in the general plan is a general layout of the entire waterworks system, which we have, we need to get it, we're going to update it with the, our, our G, our GIS mapping system, and our map that we have on the wall is really updated also, and we keep it up to date, but they, the state likes to have a copy of it also, and there's parts that I haven't forwarded to the state that, that we have updated in the last few years, so that is, that is, the first one is, we're just about done. The second one is the rated capacity of the waterworks, which, we had to go through each link of the waterworks from the treatment system to the storage tanks, and they have all those numbers, but they wanted it on one document, and, which is fine, and will be done this summer. Because we provide fire protection, the, the third item is a hydraulic analysis of the distribution system, and that is something we're, we're probably going to have to hire an engineering firm or buy the software ourselves to go through, and, which is quite a detailed process, but the good thing about this is that our ISO, our fire protection ratings, talking to Paul Guyer, there's a whole new process on how ISO is done, before we'd just go out and, with ISO wrapped, and we'd do about six hydrants around town, now you have to go out and do about 40 of them, and, and supply this, this pressure analysis, and between that and our, and our new Eskenaba Township Fire Station, hopefully our fire ratings will go down, which drops everybody's homeowner's insurance, which would be good for everybody.
You're probably where Eskenaba Township right now is on, is on standby with their new truck there in case the hydrants are frozen, which we probably don't even know about right now, right? Do we try and pump one?
We, we know which ones were frozen, but we've, we've, we actually thawed a few out with the welder the other day, so, I mean, with the electric crew. The fourth item was inventory of the water mains by size, materials and age, that has, that has been done.
So you know exactly the size of the diameter of every pipe and when it was installed, right?
We went, yeah.
I saw earlier in this two inch, I, I thought the two inches were all upgraded to at least six inch now, is there still some two inches out there?
Yeah, I, I didn't like the way he worded that, because we, well, I thought we got rid of all our two inch, but we found a hundred...
You thought same thing.
Hundred-foot section of two inch was one of our main breaks.
Yeah, I saw that.
Down by the highway, so.
They were showing me that when they had it dug up, and I was like, wow, I didn't think there was any two inches left.
When they put the highway through in, was it in the 60s?
62, I think.
62, the highway department was supposed to replace that chunk of water main, and on the as-built, it was replaced, but in real life, it wasn't, so. And let's see, the last thing is the service area maps, including existing and future service area boundaries, which we already have, and that's... And let's see, the, the second item under that category is, in the general plan, we have to have a capital improvement plan, which we already have, which changes every year, and they want a five-year and a 20-year planning period, which I have, and it changes every year depending on what happens, like the two main breaks we've had, will change things around also, so we'll give them a five-year and 20-year best guess capital improvement plan. Let's see, this is hard to follow because a civil engineer wrote it, so it's sort of the way, not to pick on civil engineers, but it's hard to follow it number by number because of the way he writes this out, but... Number two was the system management and operation recommendation, and in that, it's a reliability study, which is basically a five-year and 20-year planning period. We have to sort of tell, you have to indicate how we feel our population and industry is going to grow over a five-year and a 20-year period, and it's sort of funny, because I have some of these from the 30s and the 40s and the 50s at the water plant, and I could probably hand them one of those, and we'd be fine.
Strike that from the rocket.
Security recommendation, emergency response plan, we have our emergency response plan, and it's, go through it, we try to go through it once a year to update, and it's mostly updating the, the emergency phone numbers of the different people that we would contact. So that one is just about done, I'm getting with Mr. Beerbaum, we're up, I got to update a couple more numbers with him, so. Then we got to, get down to our treatment recommendation, we've been in the process of this polyalum chloride plant scale trial we've been doing for over a year now, and we're supposed to be getting a permit to be permanently using this, we've been getting a lot better treatment with the chemical, and we don't have to feed alum and soda ash, it's just one chemical, so we should be getting a permit on that pretty soon.
That's for raw water, right? It catches all the big stuff in the raw water?
Source recommendation, that comes, they have to put that down about, we're sort of unique in that we don't have to have an onsite emergency generator, because we have a very large, next to the site, emergency generator, so we just have to get a letter from Upco Stadium that, that we're the first one on their line, and in the event that they move, that will, then we have to state, in the event they move, we will purchase our own emergency generator, and... Other than that, that's, he had some recommendations and observations, we have to, you want, they want written standard operating procedures for non-standard operational situations, which I'm not going to comment on.
Seems a bit redundant.
I guess I don't fully understand that, but... Our source recommendation, we will be having our intake inspected, a diver inspection this summer. Filter media, we check that at least once a year. The funny thing about filter media is that filter media salesman will tell you, you have to replace it, and people that have replaced it have problems with it, it usually takes about 10 years to break it in, so that you get the good filtration, and so, it's one of those...
You don't sell as much medium if you don't replace them regularly.
If it's not broke, don't fix it, is one of those things, so. And we will be working on our redundant transmission main from the water plant, we're going to be bringing it from DPW up to the water plant, but not into the building, that, that requirement came about, we call that the Eskenaba requirement, when their main broke right at the, at the plant, and so now every, every water plant in the UP, anyway, that is required to have at least two water mains leaving their plant, not just one.
So if you had a break in the one that's, that leaves the plant right now, you'd dig up the redundant one and, and hook into that? Because you said you're not hooking up?
We have to bring a second one into the plant.
I thought you said you weren't coming into the plant with the pipe?
Not, not this year.
Oh, okay.
It's, because of the way most plants are built, it, it's, you can't just dig into the side of a wall, because, so, it's going to have to be engineered around some other improvements in the plant, so. Are there any questions?
Is the plant still a good plant, even though it's 40-some years old? I've asked that before, and I know what the answer is, but get it on the record. You got a good water department staff, they know what they're doing, tell you that firsthand. No questions? You're good, thank you, Eric.
Mhm.
Next item on our agenda is City of Gladstone's Spring Cleanup Program, Mr. Lund.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think this is the fifth year, we went from basically two and a half weeks of spring cleanup to two months, it's more user friendly for the, the residents of Gladstone also, it alleviates quite a bit of pressure on the, the solid waste facility over there. Starting, hopefully next week, we'll be able to give out the vouchers with, basically, this will be stamped to it, or stapled to it, on this side will be what it, we will accept down there by us, and what the, the solid waste facility accepts, and on the backside, we're going to put under their sheer recycling guidelines.
I think there's been some articles in the paper about people putting recyclables out that aren't acceptable.
Gladstone, Eskenaba, and Delta County Solid Waste Facility is hitting that hard as far as recyclables go.
And I heard your public service, service announcement on the radio, going through that, so that's good.
Is there any questions on that, as far as?
I have nothing. Everybody come and get your pass, it's time to get rid of a bunch of stuff on, on the, without costing you a lot of money.
Do you know how many we, we put out last year?
We normally get 700 printed up every year, and I think we hit 698 or 699.
About five, huh, 6%?
Yes, and how many are used, I couldn't tell you, but, but it's free you $1,000, I mean, it's 25 bucks right there.
Use it every year.
Wife can stop nagging and chugging. Ah, yeah. Moving on again to public comment, if there's anybody in the public who'd like to...
Yes, I could.
Barry.
I don't know if you know this or not, but Gladstone Robotics Team went downstate last, last week, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday to compete in the state finals. There was 60-some teams from Michigan to compete in those finals, Gladstone made it to the Worlds, going to St. Louis, April 24th to, to, through the 26th, so out of all the state teams, I believe there's 200 and some teams, or 400 and some teams, there was, there was 60, 62, I think, downstate, they took 30, Gladstone made it, Eskenaba and Houghton. So that's pretty impressive, actually, when you think about 10% of the teams from Michigan are from the UP, considering we're, what, 3, 4% of the population?
Very good.
And State of Michigan has a huge, I never realized that until my son got involved in this, but State of Michigan is the top state in the country as far as robotics teams, followed by California, quite a ways behind.
Wow.
Really?
Yeah, I didn't realize that, but it's pretty big in state, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Gladstone.
Thank you.
Anything else? Moving on to city commissioner comments, Commissioner Bostock.
Well, I just wanted to say the forum was interesting, because I just wish there was more people that was for it, that would come, but people who are for it usually are afraid to offend someone who's against it, but I thought it went well and had some good ideas from them, so I hope the subcommittee looks at it and takes a good, hard look at it and sees if what they have right now is good enough or not. And then also, I had a gentleman comment to me, he was wondering why this winter, the public sidewalks by the campground all over were not plowed at all? Out to like Saunders Point, I guess.
I don't know. I'll ask.
Okay, because he just wanted to know. He just wanted to know why, you know, the public has to do their own, but city didn't take care of theirs, so.
I know in the park, at the end of the winter, we, we couldn't get the plow down the sidewalk anymore, and the snow blowers at Public Works were broke down. So I, I was aware of that, I didn't feel any complaints, so.
Public is watching.
Mhm.
That's all I have. Commissioner Gay.
I wasn't able to make the forum earlier, I hope that some education was going on as, as far as, you know, and I'm sure it was, as far as explaining what we're actually trying to accomplish, I got the feeling that, that residents felt that they were trying, they were being told what to do on their property, but it, it wasn't really the case or the intent, so hopefully we come to a amicable, you know, solution that, that takes care of the problem, because it is a legitimate problem. It was brought up in 2008, it's now brought up again, so it, it, something needs to be done to correct that.
That was the impression I got at the meeting earlier tonight, that even the folks who weren't really happy with the ordinance as it's written, understand that there's got to be some kind of regulation in place, because there are some problems.
Yeah.
And our staff can't do anything until they get an ordinance.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I, it, it's easy for us to sit here and say, you know, they're, they're going to, our police officers or code enforcement officers going to approach it, you know, with a, the thought that they're teaching it first, you know, and, because the, the public realizes this is a, you know, this, this is a, this is a law, and if you break it, you're subject to penalties, but they do need to understand that we, the big, the big picture, I guess, the big goal is to make the community safer, and make the roads operate the way they were designed to operate, so hopefully this additional forum has expressed that and educated them as to what we're trying to accomplish. Other than that, I've had enough of the white stuff. I, I, I was, I kind of chuckled a little when I saw the Arbor Day proclamation, I don't think anyone's going to be planning any... I don't think anyone's gonna be planting any trees on the 25th.
One of the guys at our meeting earlier tonight said yesterday he was raking leaves, and today he was shoveling snow.
I was working outside yesterday in a t-shirt. I wouldn't have done that today.
I'm crazy.
That's all I have.
I went and observed a preschool program at the Cameron School and did an evaluation as a public official at the request of the Community Action Agency Human Resources Authority today. The teachers were very kind and very understanding of the young charges in there. When I walked in the door, I heard a bunch of little voices say, "Who's that man?" They're both probably four years old. I took the Spring 2014 Michigan Public Policy Survey that was offered online by the Michigan Municipal League. And when I see results, I'll bring them back to the City Commission. I copied "How states are fixing pension problems in Michigan can too" by a quote-unquote "expert" who spearheaded such reforms in Utah. And he was named 2011 Public Official of the Year by Governing Magazine. I'm gonna be following up on that and see what their recommendations are. I could probably guess what they are, but I'll keep an open mind. That great revenue-sharing heist study that I shared an article with the commission is now being pushed really hard by lots of media in Michigan. I'll read a couple things. Wyandotte's deficit, that's the city of Wyandotte, it's downriver from Detroit, is tied to decline in state revenue sharing. Revenue sharing could have kept Lincoln Park out of financial crisis, officials say. Macomb County cities lost more than $100 million due to state cuts. Michigan Municipal League says legislature diverted funding. Midland loses $10.9 million. So, to sum up, or Flint, here's another one. You're more familiar with Flint than I am, and so is Mr. Buckman. The state made a conscious decision to change how they tax businesses, starting in 2011 with the election of a new governor. And the result of that new legislation resulted in a whole lot less revenue to share from the state level at local units of government. In our case, it's like $200,000. And we've said at our budget meetings this year that would amount a whole big difference in our general fund where we ended up having to adopt a budget and some of the things we could have done without it. So, we know well what that's about. And the state's sitting on a surplus, and we're certainly not sitting on a surplus. Personal property taxes, that's one of the things that we are worried about as we develop the budget this year. Personal property taxes are a pretty big component of the revenue that's available to our general fund. Personal property tax bills were just recently signed by Governor Schneider. I don't know if you've read this or not, but it does appear as though the state is gonna initially make local units of government whole for their loss in personal property tax with another tax that used to be collected at the state level, which will be now dedicated to local units of government. So, I think you took a conservative approach when you budgeted for personal property revenue this year, so hopefully, we'll get some good news on that. The House passed a bill that basically is putting landline phones out of business. So, if you don't have a cellphone, you're in trouble. We're gonna get some emergency money from the state for road repairs. And the state has supposedly changed their method for funding roads, which is gonna result in more money, not as much, they, they'll come right out and tell you that it's not as much as they feel is needed to keep up with. How many times have you told us, "We're going backwards on the condition of our roads," but they have come up with some new money in an election year? Maybe that's a surprise, maybe it's not. More EVIP requirements. I'm sure you've read that already. So, in order to get the money they do give us, we have to jump through more hoops, basically, is what that is saying. And we're still gonna be, at some point in time, I think, we're gonna get some money for some unusual expenses that we incurred this year for the hard winter. But I don't expect we'll be made 100% whole.
Probably not. I meant to announce that, too. I've been in talks with Bob Beerbaum, the Delta County Emergency Management person. We don't have to pass anything, this commission, because Delta County has already declared, and we're part of Delta County, we're forwarding our information on a weekly basis to Delta County. So, we're included in this, you know, analysis that's being forwarded to the state.
When I went to that seminar that was at Bay College, and it was, it was a hearing of the state senate, and everybody was webbed in from Houghton, from Ironwood, from Eskenaba, Marquette, and from Sault Ste. Marie. People were able to talk with the senate subcommittee that was holding a hearing on this. What I walked away thinking to myself is, "You don't wanna be too quick to make a claim because we don't know the total extent of this winter yet."
And we might not until June.
Exactly. You were just surprised the other day on Minneapolis Avenue when you had something break that you didn't expect, right?
My speed bumps are hell.
Well, you're, you're gonna have a couple of them in the city that I know of where your road got compromised by a baco, but... Guess that couldn't be helped. So, that's all my comments.
Well, there's just one other thing on the revenue sharing. I don't, I don't even like it being called revenue sharing because that actually would make one, lead one to believe that the state is acquiring this revenue, which theoretically, they are. But in reality, that revenue is revenue that we've, that our residents, landowners, you know, property owners, business owners have paid to the state, and we're attempting to recoup. So, I guess my view on it is-
There is some truth that the state does collect it, but years ago, local units of government and the state agreed that it was best that the state collected and share it, and they've stopped sharing.
That's my point. And, and so, it's really not a, it's not a gift from the state. As, as the terminology would allude, it's actually us previously recouping a, you know, significant percentage of what our residents and businesses paid in. And now, that's been diminished, yet the state has a very large surplus. So, that's kind of been a tran- that's, that's a transfer of wealth, I guess you would say, from local units of government and counties to state government.
Well, you and I have become intimately aware of the staffing levels in our public safety department. And our public safety department, while they're working with less people on shifts, significantly less people than what I experienced when I worked here, there's an even greater demand because some other police agencies may not be on for 24 hours a day, and there's nobody left but the city. Somewhere, that's gotta break. Moving on to city clerk comments.
The 2014 election cycle is getting rolling. There's mandatory training coming up for clerks that I'll be attending. And also, the new AccuVote tabulator that we ordered to replace the one at Precinct 2 that has gone down on me in the last two elections, did arrive. And then, we have now a refurbishment as a backup, which we haven't had before, so excited to roll that out. So, getting ready for some election.
Lots of emails on the city's website from the city clerk keeping us in touch with what's going on. Thank you. Hearing nothing else, I stand adjourned. Thank you.